Good evening and welcome to a fourth Hanson Select Board meeting. And we also have the Whitman Select Board meeting. This meeting is being organized by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television. And I hope you'll join me in the pleasure meeting.
...................................................
Mr. Lomartina, did you want to call your meeting to a close?
I think we're good with your honor.
Okay, great. So first on our agenda, I kind of extend my gratitude sincerely to the behalf of the board for the Whitman Board being willing to meet with us. This is historic. I wish it was historic in an amazing and positive way, but it might be. We'll see. But the thing that I really love about you guys being here is that this opens up the dialogue between the two boards, which is very much needed. In fact, the dialogue between the two towns is very much needed. In fact, the dialogue between all parties is needed. But we have to walk before we can run. And so we're here to meet, to talk about the elephant in the room, which is the school assessment and what you guys, where you're at and what you're able to afford and where we're at and what we're able to afford, because we're really struggling right now. We, at this point, we're able to afford 3.75. And with that assessment, we still have $600,000, over $600,000 worth of cuts that we need to make somewhere. And when I say cuts, I want to be crystal clear that we have not targeted a department, or people, or positions, or anything. We may be having to look at capital improvement items and the like. So when you have a town budget, it's quite wide sweeping and cuts do not always translate to people being cut. So I just want to, I want to disabuse any chatter out there that might start up about, you know, that they're going to target this department. That's not the case. This board has not discussed it. There's no notion of that. That's not the way around. One of the things that, you know, so I don't know, Randy, if you want to respond, where you guys are at, what you feel that you're able to afford.
Right now, we're at a 5% assessment. Not a single panel. We didn't mean that clear. Anything more than that, we will have to start again. And like you said, the elephant in the room is if this budget as presented was to go through, we would be facing crippling cuts within our town departments. And I don't want to speculate on those, but they would be real. They would be bodies. And it would be disastrous. And I just want to go back and say, I'm very thankful for you agreed to this meeting with the entire Hanson Board. Because I do think, as we go into this budget year, I don't think it's the same as previous budget years. We're basically less than two weeks away from us having to post our warrant, yes, as well. And I don't think we've ever come down, since I've been involved in the town politics, to a situation like this, where it doesn't seem like we're really being listened to. We've been pretty clear of our, what we could afford for the school district for quite a while. It seemed to have gone over people's heads. And I'm hoping that with this joint meeting time, that we can at least show a unified position of it. I know we can afford a little bit more, but I think their ask is what we're really going to talk about and the consequences that each town would face if that was to actually go down that way.
Yeah, I mean, if we were to fully put what's being asked for, and not exaggerating, this is not, this is no exaggeration, this is part of what we've been doing historically. I don't even want to speculate about what it would look like, because it would be so unsustainable in so many ways and even precariously dangerous in so many ways. And there's just no way for us to support that budget. And I want to also be crystal clear that, and I'm sure this is the case with Whitman brethren, this is a board that supports education. Okay? I first and foremost absolutely need to say this. You are looking at the daughter of a career high school teacher, history teacher. Okay? I am not an anti-educative person by any stretch of the imagination. I spent years of my life raising money for schools in a variety of capacities. And we're the, when the budget asks are reasonable, you know, and even slightly beyond reasonable, I can probably support that. But this has gone to a, you know, to a level that is, it's just, it's beyond anything that we could really replicate right now. We're just not in a position to do that. And a couple of years ago, we did have an override. And in that override, we, the override was threatening that we were going to have to leave police fire off. And I'm never going to go through that again. We got a very, very strong read from everybody in town that they didn't want to hear that ever again. So we're here representing everybody. And we're, that's okay. It's just so you don't think Dan's leaving the protest, she's having a little cough issue. You know, I think that, I think our job is to balance all the competing needs of our communities. And we've got a lot, we've got seniors, we've got, you know, education is a huge part of our budget and it always will be. And it's a very important part of our budget. But it can't eviscerate everything else that we have to do. And so I think when you guys think about how we move forward with having a communication, I'm super disappointed that we had to get to the point where we're meeting like this. I really had been hopeful that we'd have a more robust ongoing dialogue, but it didn't happen. And I'm not going to point fingers. I'm not into the blame game. We can forensically look at that after we get through, you know, this exercise. But right now, we've got to get our house in order so that when we put our warrant out there, you know, we publish our numbers, we're clear about what we're proposing. And there's no way that this board can include the budget as presented to us in our warrant. We just, I mean, we can't. So, did anybody, Mr. Lomartina, did you look at me?
I don't know why you look.
You looked at me.
I was just, I just wanted to reiterate in a different way. I mean, I really appreciate all of you coming here and everybody being here to talk about this. We all have kids, either have kids currently or have had kids in the school system. I have kids in the school system. So obviously, we support education. But my grandparents also live in town and other people's grandparents also live in town. We don't tax people out of the town. And we have to be mindful that our role here is to make sure that we're advocating for the entirety of our constituency, not just a portion of it. And I think it's super important that we're all here right now. I really do appreciate, you know, you coming together with us. I'm really hopeful that we can maybe walk out of here with a unified message about where we would like to table for the next couple of weeks. So I'm very hopeful that we can kind of put spotlight on that.
Okay. That's, that's all I'm sorry. Mr. Lomartina, does he have anything?
Well, I think we need to, and, you know, the board members, I think we need to look at, at kind of what got us here, the school budget. And from what I see, it's the use of the COVID money, the S R funds, that now is kind of being placed on the town's lap to, and I've got to pick this up. I don't think, and my message was pretty clear last year, the amount of money that they were putting into recurring cost positions, they actually used the word reckless last year. And although it did accomplish a great thing, finally getting kindergarten, you know, free all day K, unfortunately, it's going to come at a risk. And it was a predictable risk that they were going to have a major shortfall this year. And it really is due to one-time funds being used. And I think it's something that over the last couple of years, our board has really tried getting away from the use of our town budget. But even this budget here, for us to even do the 5%, is including some one-time funds. We're not seeing any growth in any other department. One other department may see growth, but it was already on the board, other than, you know, our coal and populated costs. To me, it's very frustrating that it just seemed to have gone over everyone's head, I think. And I know Ms. Green, you know, told the school committee and the superintendent, you guys were, we have been very vulnerable where we could have been. And it just seems like it just in one ear and out the other. And I think to put a budget together where you're not even taking into consideration your actual revenue, that, I think the problem lies there. We know they have needs and they have wants, but the fact is, we all know, we only have so much revenue to work with them to make that go around. I open up to it.
Yeah. I'd like to say, even though we said that, you know, we could possibly go up to 5%, but that was, that number wasn't going out there without any threats to anybody about it. We had, we have not, we have seen enough fire chief here. They called, our new town administrator had a department meeting and said, cut what you can, but don't, you know, don't let it destroy your departments. I'm so sure that's why we want to talk about it. The fact is, yes, we had to make cuts to get to 5%. And they need to understand that. You know, it's not like, well, 5% is not a problem. I'm hoping that your board say, well, gee, you know, we can afford 5%. You know, the point is, for us to be able to do that, we do have to make cuts. And that's still going a problem beyond where we should be. Because we need growth in some of our departments. I mean, our annual fund, I mean, they're making runs all the way to South Shore, setting rocking hospitals out. So instead of a firefighter name, us being, you know, tied up for two hours, it might be tied up for four hours. Well, you can't run a department with two, you know, with three guys on a fire shift and an emergency, same thing with the police department. I mean, you know, we're running real thin to get to that 5%. And, you know, we could use, well, I know, but they need to understand that.
Yeah, thanks. Two things that I'd just like to reiterate, two concepts that I've never been, been on our minds, I think, over the last couple of years, certainly. One is sustainability and the other, like you said, is more of a balanced approach. And we've gone to great lengths to, to kind of understand how to create like a financial plan that's really going to keep us in a sustainable situation, in a statement. And I think the chiefs put together a pretty good presentation last week where they demonstrated really, over the last 10 or 11 years, we've really been lean on public safety. And because of the nature of the whole common situation with the schools, it's really been taking most of our revenue, you know, for a long period of time. Therefore, there are other departments that really need to be looked at. You know, so the 5%, I think the 5% represents a number that allows us to fund schools at a level that is sustainable, but also gives us some, some revenue to work with other departments. And I think even saying that, some arguments could be made, really, if you look over time, it's not quite enough revenue to feed into the other departments and where they're at. So it's really the whole harmless situation that I really tried to emphasize at the school committee meeting that really has us in this position. And we could, we could try to point that at different reasons for why that is, which I think is just an exercise that's just kind of foolish. The point is, we are in that, that situation and it's not an easy, it's not an easy dilemma. It's, it's really an unfortunate dilemma for us as policymakers to have to be here and really be short revenue and have to make these difficult decisions. But I think we've tried to make it in a strategic way. And the strategic way that we've tried to do that is through a financial plan and working with a consultant and landing on the 5% and making that known and all those sorts of things. So I'm really hoping that they will hear this message, you know, loud and clear, that we need to really hold firm with the 5%. At the most, 5%, depending on what you guys can afford. Begin to change with enrollment and our, and our whole harmless situation, we can begin to look at more growth budgets. That being said, if they really, if they really disagree with that approach and they do still want more revenue, I think the appropriate thing for them to do is to come forward to the community and say, listen, we're going to ask for something that's over and above the 2.5% that what you can afford within the levy. Therefore, we're going to move forward with an override, you know, and it's going to be for the schools and let's all get behind it or whatnot. But they haven't said that. So that's what creates this unfortunate dilemma of how can we fund, how can we give them more money within the levy? It's only going to come from other departments and we can't, can't not speak up against that.
Oh, and yeah, just to kind of put a little bit more detail on what Randy was, was getting at earlier, even at our 5% assessment, we're projecting about $278,000 in free cash. So because the schools are building the one-time money that they used last year into their budget, into the assessments this year, we are using one-time money to keep up with it, even at the 5%, you know, sustainable growth number that we're trying to hit. And I know even at Hanson's, I'm trying to do some back of the envelope calculations here, even at 3.75%, we'd still be using about $150,000 in free cash. So even that doesn't balance our budget. We still have to use one-time money that we shouldn't be using for the operating.
Well, and I think that's my thing that, you know, there's a lot of things, as I think we keep hearing this theme of lack of communication. And I, you know, a lot of times I think to myself, how would this work if it wasn't a regional school district? You know, if it was just a town, you know, like another town department, there'd be an open dialogue with us, just like we have with our fire chief, with our police chief, with all the other department heads, where they're coming to us and saying, hey, when you guys are planning, you know, this is kind of what I would need. And then everybody sort of balances, you know, like some year it might be highway that takes the hit and, you know, in order for police to get something. And, you know, they kind of, everybody sort of cooperatively works together. But it doesn't work that way. And I, and I understand in a way why it doesn't, because it's a different group, but ideally it would work that way, where they would be seen as another department, although they're sacrosanct and they have a different organization, where they would be seen as part of that tapestry and would be negotiating, you know, like, okay, that, you know, if we look at the overall needs of the towns, this is really, really important this year. So highway's got to have that, whatever, the plow, I keep using highway, but you know, it could be anybody plug in the department du jour. So, you know, that is concerning to me. And I, I often go like, oh, it must be so much easier in a town that doesn't have a regional school district, because they're another department and they know that they have to balance with the rest of the, so that's concerning to me. And I think the other thing that's, that's concerning is, look, we've got COVID money too, right? But we know it's one-time money. We know it. In every meeting when we, we meet, we say, we're not going to do what's easy, which would be to just take that money and plug it in so that, you know, it solves all of our ills, because it's a short-term thinking, you know, you're, and the cliff is going to be a lot steeper, you know, when you, when you finally, you know, pull back. So it's disappointing to me to have two years in a row, that one-time money used, which is just going to make that climb even steeper when that money isn't there. So, you know, so anyway, Randy, do you have something you want to say?
Well, I was just going to talk a little bit more about the one-time money.
Yeah.
As Justin alluded to, it's, we're picking up about $560,000 from last year, but the elephant really in the room is that there is $840,000 next year written over the budget. There was a slide at one of the recent school committee presentations. I don't know about Hanson, but I don't think any of our departments have seen growth like this, that since 2021, they've added 31 positions, not including Paris, that are either funded by some type of grant, rolled into the budget, or that's their funding. For me, the point of this meeting is to really try and hammer home that we will not be able to pick up that S R money. I think they got a total of $6 million. It's just no way we're going to be able to pick this up. And I think they should have the wherewithal to realize that, I mean, they were told that this was a temporary fix for interventionists to get the kids caught back up, that this was not going to be a permanent pipeline of money. And it really is causing the problem. But seeing that, you know, we often hear that the schools have taken a hit. Well, it was that one year probably before you and I, Jim, got on, where an override did fail and they did lose some positions. Those positions have come back twofold. But I don't think with the way we sit with whole harmless and with this S R money, that the towns are going to be in a position to even sustainably try and correct this budget this year. And I just want to go back, and I'm really disappointed that, you know, we're two weeks away from having to post this and print this up, and they're not even talking about it tomorrow night at their meeting. It's not, their budget's not even on the agenda tomorrow night. That says something. Now, for our two boards to think this much to get together, knowing how crippling this budget would be, and I'll say it again, crippling to the towns. It's not an education problem. I know we all support education. It's a management issue. Wholeheartedly, this is a management issue, a management not having enough respect for the towns to try and work through this with us.
Yeah, I don't know how many times we can implore a partner to please open up the dialogue, like, please, we're here, we want to work with you. And it just, and it hasn't happened. But again, I'm trying not to really, and I can appreciate why they may have had to have added some positions, because certainly COVID has brought a host of mental health issues and other things that, you know, I know are being seen across the nation, honestly, with the impact that it has had on children. But, you know, I think maybe just everything in good measure and it just seems extreme when you take a step back. Mr. Hickey, did you have something? You looked very patient over here.
You want to speak?
Yes, please, Mr. Hickey.
Thank you for coming. I really do appreciate this. I have to say before I start, I thought we were going to be speaking above the agreement that it says in my agenda.
Well, we can, we can talk about that too, but...
We don't need to, but it doesn't say we were going to be talking about the budget. But that can of worms has already been opened. So I'm just jumping in. And I agree with everything that's being said, kind of tough, without having, you know, the entire school committee or at least some members of the school committee here to say why they're doing this. But if we go to your departments where you have a 2.5% increase, and I'm not going to call it coal, because it's not a cost of living raise, and we go to a 2.5, why does the school get 5? Why does the school get 3.75? And now saying that, everybody that's watching this at home is, Hickey's against education. That's what it sounds like, or that's what it's going to be printed Thursday, that I'm against education. I'm not. I'm exactly what you said, Randy, I'm against mismanagement. There are a lot of positions up there and it could be through the whole town too, whether it's police or fire or highway or the DPW, whatever, that there are positions that are not needed. Now, I get with COVID, and the number one priority was to make sure those students, that those kids were okay. But the district got money from COVID, as the towns did. What did they do, and I don't know the answer to this, what did they do with that money if we were giving so much more of this one-time money? And now that one-time money, we have to fix that problem. And Laura is exactly right. And we do take a hard look at things where we're not going to spend that money on reoccurring situations. So the whole thing has to be fixed. Somewhere along the line, within the last few years, it, I can only speak for me being on the board, and I've heard Laura use this expression, but it jumped the tracks. Why aren't they here like any other department? Why aren't they in front of you guys like any other department? It, it's, you know, I mean, I hate to draw the line in the sand, but it's, it has come to this and somehow it has to stop. So I mean, I appreciate you coming, that we can get on this.
And, one second, John. And Jim, I would reiterate, I wholeheartedly hope you do not take me out of context when this hits the express or when it, because I know that everyone on this board supports our children getting a quality education. But I also would believe that we support our towns getting the proper services they need to. And so that's why I think the school district isn't here tonight because of that, because I think this is, to me anyway, is an issue where we're just coming together saying, we, we don't, it's not that we don't support education. We as policymakers in our towns cannot support this budget as presented. It's not an education thing, it's not hurting children. This is, we, we look at this, the totality of the budget and say, that department cannot get that out. And it's easily controlled with our police off by our DPW, because our town administrators sound such, you're not going to get that this year. And 90% of the time, our department heads realize, look, this is my year to kick in. This is my year that I'm not, I'm going to have that skin in the game or I'm not going to go for increases. I'm going to be the team player. And we, you don't see that from the school district. You get them to a goalpost and it's moved. And I think with, with the first round of CARES money, I mean, you saw, we, we gave every bit and more of what was in that first round of CARES that came to us. I know full pounds gave more than, than what we should have. No questions asked, whether it was PPE, whether it was desks, so we could have separation, whether it was, you know, the glass dividers, anything to keep our kids safe. Nobody on, I think on either board ever blinked an eye at that stuff. But the recurring costs, creating positions, the one-time money, you know, probably going to be, it sounds like I'm beating a dead horse, but the towns are not going to be able to come up with that money.
Well, Mr. Hill, did you have anything? I know you have a question.
No, I just, I just, I'm new at this first year here, but I have always thought proposition 2.5 and 2.5, and I, I get, you know, above the, you know, you're talking 3 and 7, 3.75, which is a lot. We could probably handle it, but it does take away from, from the town. I mean, that's, it's a given. And then, you know, and adding COVID money and one-time money and then using that when you're figuring, you know, the percentage you go up, you can't be, it's unsustainable. There's nothing for us to do. I mean, we just can't do it.
This is right?
It's, it has to be fixed. That's all I can say. I mean, we can't sustain it, we can't sustain it, and they should be answering to it. They should be answering to it. And I don't understand why they're not.
All right, so I think we've got, oh, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. King.
Sorry, thank you. When I think back about the, the way that this, the budget cycle began, there was a little bit of tension, I thought, where they didn't pay enough attention to the amount of revenue that we had, because I think that's a really good starting point for, for the budget discussions. But they did invite us over there and we were able to have a discussion, which I really appreciated. I really appreciate and respect Chris Howard and Chris Groom, the leadership of the school committee and the leadership of the school administration. It's just a decision that they made last week that threw me off. If everything had happened right up to last week and then they did kind of come down to where really we were honestly saying, this is what we can afford, I think we really would have made progress through this budget cycle. That decision last week throws me off, because we're, we only have, we're a month away from town meeting, you know, so really in crunch time and it's, they kind of forcing our hand to get together and figure out what the heck are we going to do if it doesn't go through, because we don't have enough time for an override, you know, that's not what they're asking. So they put their, they picked us against departments against each other. So we need some sort of contingency plan. I mean, that's why I'm, I'm here to talk about this, you know, but I, I do have respect for those guys. I just, I'm hoping that they'll really hear our honest voice and say, we just can't mathematically afford, you know, so.
So, so I think we need to, so I think, I'm not hearing anybody say that we're not in a kettle of fish here and that we don't need to come up with a plan and that we don't need to try to act together. I haven't heard anybody say that. So I think at this point, unless somebody's got something else they want to add to that piece of the discussion, I think we should move on to what are we going to do about it? And how do we move forward? How do we communicate it? What does town meeting look like and all of that? So I don't know whether anybody's got thoughts on that.
I'll go first, but just to end that, that discussion, because Joe, you had mentioned, you know, you could do the 5%, but you're making cuts. And most likely, it's going to be in police and fire. Now, when you say it takes four hours to go to South Shore Hospital, now my fire department in Hanson is being...
Same thing, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. More.
Exactly. So, you know, and I don't want to, I'm not sure how I want to say this, I don't want to see Whitman make cuts. to see Whitman make cuts to get to that 5%. We know we can't go to 5%. I would rather see you guys come down to the 3.75 and not make those cuts, because when your fire department is gone, Hanson's fire department has got it covered. And that just puts a strain on both towns.
I agree with you 100%. By going, I mean, we set the 5% because that's when we had our important gun to the town. That's what they gave us, you know, go to 5%, we can afford that on a regular basis. But the fact is, as times change, and the needs change, that 5% may seem like a lot. Now, I mean, to come down, you know, I mean, I don't know what we're going to do as far as, I mean, you can afford 1.75% without making any...
Oh, no, that's what $600,000 worth of cuts.
Right, so with the cuts. I mean, now, that is ridiculous. That's a lot for, you know, the towns of Whitman and Hanson, we melt the high school, you know, the regional school system. The thing is, each town looks at the schools apart from our departments, right? We're all there, but we can't turn around and say, okay, we can keep the schools for the children, and the heck with the police, fire, DPW, libraries, whatever. You can't do that. And I can remember during COVID, where towns were helping the schools, or other departments were helping the schools, because, you know, kids could need to be there, or something like that, and homeschooling, or whatever. We are one town, but we need to understand that we're one town, but we need to work together. Now, for one, one department to turn around and say, well, we want X amount of dollars, that's what we want, we'll go to town meeting, and we'll, and we'll fight to get it, right? And then if they don't get it, then what do they do? Right? Then what do they do? They got to go back and come with a number the town meeting goes with. Now, our town meetings are on the same night. We don't know what you offer, I mean, you offer a dollar number, and of course, our dollar number is always, you know, because of the agreement in the 60, the body. But the point is, the percentage is the same. The dollars, no, you know, we have more, too. But the percentage should be the same. If you say, without making any drastic cuts of $600,000, or I've taken $600,000 from free cash, which is a huge mistake, because what are you going to do next year? A million? What you don't have?
Right, right.
You don't do that, right? And making schools should take some lessons from their math teachers, you know, you just don't do that. But if you come up with a number, you know, it's going to have to be there. I mean, we shouldn't be sacrificing other town departments for one department. And if it was reversed, we shouldn't be saying, well, sacrifice the fire, the fire, the police, or vice versa, or the DPW, you know, you don't do that. You can't do that. We're all one department, one town, and we all should work together, and one, one department shouldn't say, well, I want, I want, I want.
Dean, I just wanted to apologize for calling you, Joe, but when I looked this way, Joe gave me the evil eye, and I couldn't get that out of my head.
I have a little bit more hair than you.
I was going to say, we...
I know Joe's hair, that's why. Joe can admire you, just be forward.
I wasn't going to call you while...
Appreciate that point, I appreciate that.
Ms. Solomontainen.
It'll get gray after a while, Joe.
I was going to say, look into the future.
I mean, I don't know if the meeting's going to come down a percentage, you know, us ironing out the percentage, because we've already given them what we can afford, and it's, but I have thought about what kind of puts some teeth into this meeting, what shows that unity. I would actually propose making a motion that the two boards vote not to endorse the school budget as presented to the two towns.
I'll second that. That works, yeah.
What?
If we can.
No, wait, I...
Wait a minute.
Let's think this through logically. I think you got, because we're not really a board, we're two boards, so you can make that motion, somebody from your board can second it, and then you guys can take the vote, and then we'd have to do the same thing. Right? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so go for it.
But I would make a motion that the Whitman Board of Selectmen not endorse or support the FY '24 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District budget as presented.
So...
No. I'll second that. All right. All in favor? One.
You got to go over that.
All right, Randy Solomontainen made the motion, Dan Solomontainen made, I second it.
Yeah, I will entertain that same motion from my board, who's going to make that motion.
So moving.
All in favor? All right, so that said, I think, if we fast forward in the timeline, I think the next school committee meeting is tomorrow night, this isn't on the agenda. So the following week, I believe, they're meeting as well on Wednesday. We originally were going to try to post our warrant by the 11th, but I can see that was an ill-fated date, and probably we're not going to pull that little miracle off. So I'm just trying to think how this will play out. If we send a letter, probably have both of the town administrators send a letter saying, at our, you know, April 4th meeting, each board independently trip that vote, we're hoping, in light of this, that you will reconsider the assessment to each town, I'm paraphrasing, whatever. And then I'm hoping that at the 12th meeting, they will reconsider that dollar amount. Now, if that doesn't happen, we're not going to have any choice but to put in our own article, or propose something on the floor, but I quite honestly would prefer to have something structured in advance, so that there's no fly by the seat of our pants to try and make an amendment on the floor. I would prefer to avoid that if we can. So we'll probably put something in our warrant, and again, I like to work through worst-case scenario. So worst-case scenario, we come up with two different dollar amounts, or they don't come down, or any of this, then we're looking at what we were looking at possibly last year, I've got PTSD, so I try not to really, where we were looking at the possible super town meeting, because it gets sent back to them, and they have to come up with the budget. So I'm hoping that it doesn't go that route, because that's going to be, bring a lot of uncertainty for people across the board, departments, the school, the kids, the parents. I really hope, that's kind of, in my mind, like the nuclear option, which I'm really hoping that, you know, cooler heads prevail, and some balance is found, and that isn't the way that this ends up going, but that would be the worst-case scenario.
And I would hope, I mean, we, when we had to, you know, when that discussion was brought up, and going, the school budget going to a 112, I think we all heard how disastrous that was.
Yes.
And what that does, you know, to morale the teachers, and just for the budget in general. So I think we smart enough to kind of heed this call of what is affordable. Our numbers are out there, and I have all the confidence in the world that beyond us, that Ms. Green and Ms. Carter can hopefully probably have a couple more meetings with the superintendent, if needed, and kind of come down to a number that we all, but I'll not, you know, have that, if they don't come down, have it, town meetings to, to make sure that no department feels any, you know, significant pain due to this request.
Yeah, I agree. I'm hoping we can calibrate to the extent possible, but, you know, but I appreciate if you guys don't really want, you know, start giving that off, but we certainly don't have the wiggle room to go up, so, you know. Oh, please, feel free.
So, because I have a, I know there's going to be lots of people watching this probably, and especially leading up into the town, in reading about these numbers, you know, the demographic of Hanson right now is, and I...
46%.
It always stuck with me with what Mr. Hickey was saying, it's divided up into thirds. A third of our town is of retirement age and on fixed income. This is not anti-school, it's none of that, I know it's been said a thousand times, but the uniqueness of this town, that a third of our folks cannot afford this, that burden of... And I don't, I don't take the... They are in charge of advocating for the children and teachers, and all of the essential supports that are needed for a good quality education. I believe that 1,000%, they are doing what they believe is right, and they are saying, because they're going to say, this isn't a wish list, this is a need, these are, these are necessary services. And I may agree with that, but in tough times like this, it becomes incredibly more difficult for us as leaders to be able to make hard decisions and lead, and try to come to, to an agreement that makes sense for everybody. I've heard people say, well, if the override happens, the override happens, people need to stop paying more, I've heard that, I've heard that even coming into this. And people are willing to pay, that's fine, but there is a third of our entire demographic that literally cannot afford that. They can't. They cannot pick up extra hours, they cannot go get another job, and they've lived here their entire life and dedicated their entire existence to living in this town. I only speak to this town, I don't know the demographics of yours, although I grew up there, I don't, I can't speak to it now. But I really just want to emphasize this, no one here is coming from a place of, of, you know, trying to, to take something from other departments to give to the school, or take from the school to give to other departments. We're literally in a place of really survival right now, and this decision is going to be the basis for which a third of our folks in this town have to make some serious decisions on whether or not they can actually live here, even though they've called this town home for years and years and years. So I'm just imploring folks, whether it be tomorrow's meeting, or the weeks coming up to this, that we're not looking at it from a divisive place, we're not trying to say that this department's good, this department's bad, this collective body is good, this governing body is bad, but really just think about the people that are, and I know you are to a degree, and I know you, your charge is for the children and the schools, but we do have that one-third that we are extra sensitive to, and we have to do a good job of advocating for them as well. So if you're looking at this, I just want the next couple of weeks to be focused on that. They cannot afford it, even if we wanted to, and even taking, going into 3.75, we're able to do that, we're still, you have to consider, there's lots of room for improvement, whether it be the website, the roads, sidewalks, whether it's buying a new piece of equipment, we now can't do that, because we're funding our budget off of one-time costs, and you would never, unless it's a last resort, continuously pay your mortgage on your credit card, you just can't do it. So I really just want the next couple of weeks to be focused on, how do we come together, accepting that every department has their needs, but we literally don't have any blood to draw from that stone? So just, I just want to put that out there.
No, I agree with that, and I think it's really a case of, we have a lot of competing needs, and we have to balance those, we can't do anything to the extreme, and the budget that's been presented is to the extreme. If it was more modest, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. So our responsibility, our fiscal responsibility, is to make sure that we're balancing the budget, and we're balancing all the many competing needs, and that we're doing that to the best of our ability. And I think that we have been doing that. This has just thrown quite a curveball. So, Mr. Hickey, did I get you to say, people to say something?
No, I just said, great job, Joe.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's actually 33%.
33%.
Going to the 2020 US Census Bureau, the nation is 15%, 65 and older. Hanson is at 33. I don't know what Whitman has, but the US Census Bureau is also predicting in 2030 that 20% of the country will be over 65.
Yeah, I wish I was 55 again.
I'm sorry?
I said, I wish I was 55 again.
Well, so in Hanson, it's going to be at least double, if not more, you know, so...
Now, if I may ask, when, if you come up with a percent, a percentage, which is going to be your number, we need to know exactly what, not the number, but the percentage.
Well, the number, we need the number.
Well, the number, but we also, I mean, what's a 3.5, 3.75, we'll say, for you, is $1 figure, 3.75 for us is another dollar figure, but it'll be higher.
Right, and if I could, just real quick, because, Dan, you've said this a couple times now, I've done a little bit of projections, because of the way the statutory method is swinging back to us this year, as we've added more students, a 4% assessment to Hanson is a 4.7% assessment to Whitman. So it is a little bit, it's not going to be the same percentage, it's going to be a little higher for Whitman. If Hanson is 3.75, Whitman's probably 4.25.
And I did want to mention, Dan, just because I know that I will get, I will not, you know, show we're nameless, but will be saying, you did mention that the split was 60-40, but that is no longer the case.
I know, I know.
It's statutory.
Sorry, old school.
Okay. So, okay, just wanted to clarify that.
The pendulum's swinging, starting back, yeah?
Yes, yeah. Randy said this a couple of years ago, he said that the pendulum was going to swing eventually. Yeah, so the pendulum is swinging. Not fast enough, but it is swinging.
Almost 100%. You're going to have to come up with some more to operate.
So, okay, so I think this is a good, we'll have the two town administrators send the letters, and we'll, and then I think we're just going to have to keep, have everybody keep in contact, the two town administrators keep in contact, and reach out to the schools, and see if we can calibrate and get, you know, closer, if not, you know, on the exact same page. Did anybody have anything else? No? Dan, do you have something?
Are we going to discuss what's on the agenda, or...
I mean, we can discuss the agreement if you'd like, since it is there, but...
Everyone, you know...
I don't know.
We can.
It wasn't on our agenda.
Oh, okay, then, it was just, it was actually just written in, but if it wasn't on yours, then let's...
That was absolutely a spurner's error, I think that was a mistake.
Okay, then, no, I don't want to talk about it.
That is the purpose of the school committee meeting this week.
Tomorrow night?
The reason is on the agenda.
And that's, that's it? What's that say?
6:30.
See you then.
Okay.
Facilities at 5:30, if you want to. Really, you're fine.
No, that's the tonight's meeting.
Okay, so if, did you want to adjourn your meeting, and we'll take a brief recess?
I would seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Thanks again, guys, we really appreciate it. Thank you. And Ryan, we're going to take a brief recess. Okay, welcome back to our April 4th, 2023 Select Board Meeting in Hanson. This is being televised by Whitman-Hanson Community Access Television. We're going to take things a little bit out of order tonight, we do have a hearing coming up at 6:30 with National Grid, but in our audience, we have got Dori and, from the Camp Quone, and I'm wondering if you want to give us a, Dori Jameson, if you would like to give us an update?
I would love to.
And it's very awkward right now, because it's in the middle of the floor, but feel free.
I can adjust.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, thank you so much for having me here to provide an update of Camp Quone. I'm really excited about the improvements that we've accomplished the past three years, and I think you will, too. So I thought I'd start out with, by the side, the entrance way to the camp, and as you know, we had the sign that says, Welcome to Camp Quone, totally refurbished. Well, we took that sign down, and I can't tell you how many phone calls we had, where's the sign? Where's the sign? We said, it's fine, it's in good hands, it did have to go to the emergency entrance, but it's in good hands. So a company called Litchfield Signs in Pembroke, they refurbished it, they did an amazing job, because it's redwood, and you can't even get that today. And they said that the whole sign was riddled with termites and the wearing on the hardware. They said, one, it was one windstorm away from toppling. So we got there in the nick of time, and as you know, they did a fantastic job, and I think now it gives the look that I think the camp deserves. So as you approach up the drive, I thought I'd start over on the south end. So we had, in October of 2020, we had a big windstorm, and it took out, a tree landed right in the middle of a cabin, Cabin 16 in the south end, took it out completely, and everything that was in it. So since then, we've had that cabin rebuilt, it's actually three feet higher, and it has electricity. And the electricity now is underground, as opposed to pole-to-pole, and that way, so, you know, for further storm damage, and it goes all the way to the bathhouse to provide electricity for that side of the camp, which is exciting. During a subsequent storm in October of 2021, we had another windstorm, and it took out the roofs of the two chalets. So those two roofs are completely redone with asphalt shingles, and they look great. And also, speaking of the cabins in the south end, we have new mattresses coming, we purchased 200 new mattresses, that is really going to give a good look to the cabins, which they desperately need. The existing mattresses that we had were just not even... The, the existing mattresses that we had were just not even usable. So we have two hundred mattresses coming up, they're coming up actually from Athens, Tennessee. So I think they're friendly, you know, being southern mattresses and all. So we're looking forward to their arrival, they're gonna come this month. So we're excited about that. Then, if you go over to the bridal cottage, the inside has been done with all-new decor, and we have two new air conditioning units in the windows of the bridal. And that's slotted to be painted this spring. Then, if you go out to the front of the lodge, we had all-new landscaping done. We had birch trees planted, flowering trees, boulders. And thanks, thanks to Ed Sheehan Corporation, Ed donated a granite rock that we had engraved, Welcome to Camp Kewaunee. So it looks spectacular. And we also had, um, solar lights put on the flagpole, which sits right in the center of the loop. So we made a lot of progress there. Then, if we enter the lodge, the biggest thing we did was the kitchen. Had a complete renovation, hood, induct work, it came out fantastic. We're now able to use a ten-burner stove that we've had, it's never been used. We're now able to use that, and we had the two pizza ovens completely refurbished. And we did a hood-induct whole, it's called an ansel system, on the roof. So while they were doing that, they realized that the timbers were all rotted and needed a lot of repair. So we're able to, at the same time, which saved a lot of money, repair all the broken wood, fix all that. Now, the problem was, the green shingles that are on the roof? Well, we were able to get the last batch of green shingles on this earth. And thanks to Eagle Rebuilding Model, he drove all the way to Western Mass to pick up these shingles. And we got them, and he put them on the roof, and it looks spectacular. Um, the duct, it, it's big, and it's stainless steel. So a project we're working on now is, we'd like to camouflage it a little bit, and I'm soliciting quotes now, for a green paint. They can do that on the stainless, to just, to, to blend it in. But it works fantastic, we have a new fire suppression system. So we're rolling right along there. We had the kitchen floors sanitized and sealed. Uh, we had the butcher block tops sanitized and sealed. Um, we had, if you go out into the lodge, we had the two fireplaces at the entryway, when you come in, it was broken, that is functional. The fireplace in the library wa, was not working, that is now functional, which that, that adds a lot of ambiance. And we're having the floors done in the lodge next week. They're gonna be sanded and, um, actually, um, sealed next week. And that makes a big difference. The floors look unbelievable when they're done. It's a big selling point with that. Um, so we have that, and then we did, um, the, another, so then we fixed the problem with the heat. So when I got there, it was January, and it was cold. And I was told, there's just no heat. It's like, what do you mean, there's no heat? Well, no, there's just no heat. There's no heat in the foyer, and there's no heat in your office. I'm like, all right. So I became best friends with my space heater. And it was like, something, this is just not right, right? So I had a conversation with a very intelligent electrician at the camp about something else, and I was explaining it to him, and he said, what do you mean, it's no heat? I said, I don't know, that's what I'm told, there's no heat. He said, oh, you need a thermostat. So we needed a ten-dollar thermostat to en, enable us to have heat. So I was so excited about that. I said, okay, we're going places. And the other thing we fixed was, the biggest selling point of the camp, I think, is out on the back deck, on the water, we have the four windows that actually drop down, you know, built in the nineteen hundreds. Well, one of them was broken, and it hadn't been operational for six years. So they didn't use the windows because it looked off if you had this one not working and the other three working. So now, I'm thinking, well, they also told me there was no heat. So I'm thinking that, that this could be fixed too. So thankfully to Gordon Lincoln, who came in, and he did an amazing job. He fixed the window, and he actually fixed the bearings and the hardware on the other three, and they're working beautifully, and it's, it's a huge selling point for the camp.
That's amazing to be able to have that open.
Unbelievable. Every bride that sees it just says, no bride comes there and says, ah, no. Everybody says, oh my God, is the date available? You know, they just, they just want to book. It's just, it's amazing. So those are, I think I covered everything about the, um, improvements in, I think I did, in the lodge. I believe I did. Um, oh, we also painted the lodge walls inside, it's much brighter now. And we replaced the lighting with LED lights, so it's much brighter because it was very dark. So now it's just, it's, it's, it's a lot more welcoming. Um, then, let's see, we had security cameras installed, uh, in the lodge, which is working out great. Our next step is to get them in the camps. Because dealing with vandalism is, is always tough. So, you know, we're working on that, so we're working, along with Steve, to get, get that done. Um, so now, if we move on to the north end, thankfully for the CPA funding, we're able to remove all of the, um, drapes, or I guess you would call them, um, uh, not drapes, blinds, like the blinds, yes, shades. And they're all worn and just, they're, so removing all those and replacing them with wooden shutters. And the wooden shutters, they painted a bright cherry red, and it, it looks amazing. It's, it makes the campground look completely different. And it protects, um, the screens, and it actually protects from vandalism for the cabins. So we're working on that, which is coming out great. And then, in the frontier lodge in the north end, we repaired the, uh, wood stove. It needed a new flue lining and a new hearth, so that's up and running. So guests love that because it's so cozy to put on a wood stove. Um, then, if you head out the north end and you go down to the pond, we have the boathouse that houses all our canoes and things like that. Well, that suffered some damage from the October twenty-twenty-one storm too. And so the way it's positioned, kids can just walk right up the roof, and they do, and they take the shingles and they fling them into the pond. So we outbox them. We just put on, two weeks ago, a new slate roof. Dark green, you have to see it, it's beautiful. It'll last a lifetime, and they were also able to repair all the wooden structures around the roof. So that's been completely refurbished. It looks absolutely terrific. It really does. Um, and let's see, Cranberry Cove. So Cranberry Cove, we are very hopeful this year that we'll be able to get back to lifeguard, beach director, swim lessons, Rogers Crazy Kayaks is coming back to be able to wreck kayaks. Um, we're also working on stormwater management issues with regard to erosion closely with the Conservation Commission. And we're also using Opera Funds and also CPA funds to be able to do landscaping at the Cove, to bring it back to a more forested state like it used to be years ago. We're working on that and the parking lot.
Now, will that get rid of the dreaded sand wasps?
Hopefully, the sand wasps will be gone. Yeah, that's the intent. And, um, also gratefully to the CPC Committee, they voted to allow us funding to put in playground equipment. So as you approach the drive to the left, there will be, uh, playground there that's gonna have seven entryways that, for kids, five to twelve, that will have, you know, slides and, um, um, monkey bars and, you know, all that swings and everything like that for the playground. So, so that's exciting. So I guess I would say, on a final note, I think our greatest accomplishment is becoming the Camp Kewaunee Senior Center. As you know, a pipe burst in the senior center, and they moved in with us. Well, we love them. Our days are now filled with laughter, dance, song. It is just unbelievable. They love being there. So I probably shouldn't tell you this, but I sometimes have difficulty focusing on my work, especially on a Thursday at twelve-thirty, because I find myself focusing on line dancing. So who knew line dancing would be so much fun?
They do a great job.
Oh, unbelievable. They're unbelievable.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we just love having them there. So it's, it's really been great. So we're really gonna miss them. But I think it's the beginning of a new collaborative effort, I think.
Well, we're grateful for you guys allowing, you know, having them there.
Oh, yeah.
Frank was just like, absolutely, Dr. Renee will take care of it, you know.
Oh, they're wonderful.
Yeah.
They're absolutely wonderful, yeah. And I was even thinking, like, line dancing on, on the deck, the back deck, line dancing with a view. You know, wouldn't they love that?
What could possibly go wrong on the deck with line dancing? I'm thinking, does our liability insurance cover this?
Yeah, they're, they're back sheltered, it'd be fine. What could go wrong? So I'd like to close by saying we have a great, dedicated, hard-working team. Uh, we're looking forward to a very busy upcoming season. Um, we actually, also including a bridal show, I put out some pamphlets, it's on, uh, Sunday, May seventh. Uh, and I'm happy to report that the camp is now revenue positive. We have earned over two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars this year in revenue.
That's amazing.
Yeah, we're, we're doing great, and I'm very, very proud. And I would like to also thank every department who helps us each and every day throughout the year. We couldn't do it without them. And thank you so much, Select Board, for allowing me the time to brag about Camp Kewaunee.
Well, thank you. You are a ray of sunshine, and you have been since the day you started.
Oh, thank you.
Your devotion and your passion to Camp Kewaunee, um, does not go unnoticed.
Thank you.
Um, so we thank you. Did anybody have any questions for Dory?
It's just amazing how much they can do in ten years. If that's not one year, all that you.
The revenue, the, the.
No, everything you just listed.
Three years.
Three years.
Three years.
That is unbelievable.
Lot got done, yeah.
That's really.
Yeah, like, especially in army-ness of a world.
Yeah.
That, that's a lot.
With everything going on, yeah, that's great. Congratulations, and thank you for everything, everybody on your.
That kitchen looks amazing. I mean, it used to be a little scary to be in that kitchen.
Yes.
We're never too sure which burner was gonna work or blow you up.
Right.
Um, but yeah, you know, really, it's, looks quite amazing.
It really does, yeah. It's, oh, the caterers absolutely love it.
Well, I think it also is gonna be possible to have, like, cooking classes and things like that in there because the space is, you know, conducive to it, so.
Yeah, we actually have that coming up. It's called Mommy and Me, it's around Mother's Day. Mothers and daughters class, they bake the cookies there in the kitchen, and then they go out to the lodge and they decorate them. So we've got two classes scheduled for that, which is really, really great.
Anybody else have any question?
I just wanted to, you know, personally, uh, Dory, because she did welcome the seniors up there with open arms.
Oh, my pleasure.
I didn't want to bring this up in public, but you owe us eighteen dollars for line dancing? No.
Had I known it cost, I might have thought differently.
Line dancing is free. Um, and Dory is absolutely right, um, that.
It's so much fun.
They, they like being there, but.
They love it.
We really want to go home.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a nice place to visit.
Yeah, well, there's no place like home.
Right, and they really want to get back, and they're looking forward to get back. But it's just the idea of two different departments, you know, collaborating, that took about five seconds.
Yep, yeah. Oh, exactly. Mary and I say that all the time. Mary and I didn't even know each other. How would we? You know, and now we've really become close, you know, and it's, it's wonderful, and all her employees and ours, and it, it's just beautiful, everywhere you look at it.
Call Mary Mother Teresa.
She's amazing.
If I was close in Hanson, we've gotten Hanson.
She's the, an angel on earth, for sure, yeah, no question.
Yeah, I'll see you tomorrow morning.
See you tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Dory.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dory.
All right, uh, we've got another fifteen minutes, and I think we can, we can, oh. Oh.
Oh.
Renee asked if I'd mentioned, I'm sorry, Renee, oh my God, Lynn asked if I'd mentioned the dragon boat?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Oh, okay, so the dragon boat is coming actually April twenty-ninth. Uh, it's gonna be moored off the boathouse with the new roof. And they're actually gonna start their practices on May eighth, Monday, May eighth. They're gonna practice every Monday, um, starting May, beginning May eighth.
And are we charging them, and are they opening up their program to the general public?
They're just storing it there, and they're using it for practice runs only. They're not gonna do any competitions or anything like that.
Okay.
So at, at this point, there's been no, no charge.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody have any questions about that?
I, you asked if, if, if the public could, could join the boat?
Well, I was wondering if they were gonna do, like, a pub, if they were gonna have, like, public activities, you know, like, less.
I, I, I think they, they mentioned, I talked to them when they were talking to the Conservation Commission, they mentioned that they were hoping to have town folk join them, so.
Maybe that's, maybe they've gotta take baby steps first.
Probably not through Camp Kewaunee, but I think they do want locals.
Is that what they called us, town folk? Okay.
That's the official.
When can we start charging them?
All right, great, thanks, Dory.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dory.
All right. Um, we've got, uh, discuss, to vote, and accept bench located at Town Hall Green. Mr. Hickey?
That? Um, I'm very surprised to see that on there.
Well, yeah.
But I guess, um, the two-hundredth committee, um, we had a slight problem with the, uh, time capsule, where the cover was not suitable.
Oh.
So they didn't want us to send the cover back. Um, so what the, um, the committee decided to do, um, at cost, um, and donate it to the town. And now the bench sits over where the time capsule is buried.
Is it even? Because from my, and I'm not, it looks a little.
Well, it's on a hill, so it, it's.
Is there some way we can make it look even, like, maybe put some?
I had said that to the gentleman that I worked with on it.
Okay.
To have it stand up, and it would just be a couple of concrete blo, uh, blocks.
Okay, if you can take that into consideration.
Yeah.
Okay, because it, it kind of, my little OCD brain just explodes every time I go by.
I don't like it every time I try by it.
Um, okay, did anybody have any questions? Okay, um, then I will entertain a motion to accept the, um, the donation of the town bench on the Town Hall, Town Hall Green.
So.
All in favor? Okay, great. Um, and then we've got press release for fire chief, Ms. Green.
Uh, yes, um, I'm chair and members of the board. Uh, we have issued a press release regarding the appointment of Robert O'Brien as our next Hanson Fire Chief. Um, a copy of that, do we have a copy of that?
Yeah.
Um, the press release?
Yeah, we'll get it in our practice.
Yeah, and you had, um, Mr., you had Mr., um, O'Brien take a look at that, so he was comfortable. I know Lynn worked with him to make sure that we had the facts correct and, and all that. I will read it. Um, it says, "The town of Hanson Select Board is pleased to announce that Deputy Chief Robert O'Brien has been selected as the new Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director. Deputy Chief O'Brien will be acting Fire Chief starting April seventh, twenty-twenty-three, and will begin his new role as Fire Chief on May eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Select Board Chair Laura Fitzgerald Cammott states, "The Hanson Select Board wishes to thank outgoing Fire Chief Jerome Thompson for his many years of hard work and dedication. We are thrilled to welcome Deputy Chief O'Brien and look forward to working with him in his new role. Deputy Chief O'Brien joined the town of Hanson Fire Department in nineteen ninety-seven as an on-call firefighter, joining full-time in two thousand, culminating with his promotion to Deputy Chief," I'm wondering if that should be capitalized, D capital C, "um, in twenty-eighteen. During that time, he worked on several major code enforcement projects, facilitated the new hires program, and has worked to support department administration and staffing. 'I am excited for this next chapter of my career,' said O'Brien. 'I want to thank the entire department and citizens of town for their continued support throughout the years. I am humbled and honored to serve in the same town I grew up in, and in my new role, will continue to strive for the utmost excellence and safety for the citizens of the town of Hanson.'" In addition to his credentialing as Massachusetts Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director, Deputy Chief O'Brien is the co-director of the Southeastern Massachusetts Technical Rescue Team, chief liaison for Plymouth County Technical Rescue, Massachusetts Helicopter-Aquatic Rescue Team Program Director, a certified chief fire officer from the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy, and UMass Boston Edward J. Collins Center for Professional Management, and Vice President of the Plymouth County Fire Rescue Training Association. Robert O'Brien, a lifelong resident of Hanson, lives with his wife Deborah, sons Christopher, Amando, Nathan, and Tristan, and daughter Chloe. The, the O'Briens are very active as foster slash adoptive parents. Okay. Um, I, and I, I hope that you guys agree with the fact we are thrilled. I just threw that in there. I didn't take an official vote on you guys saying that, but I figured you were all thrilled too. Um, okay, great. Um, so do we need a, um, motion or anything, or you just wanted to FYI us on that, Lisa?
Just an FYI.
Okay, great, fantastic. So we will just move right along. Um, and then, that brings us to Dollars for Scholars. Um, declare April Dollars for Scholars Month. I will entertain a motion.
So.
Second.
All in favor? Erect a fundraising thermometer on Town Hall Green. I will entertain a motion.
So.
Second.
All in favor? Fantastic. Um, one-day liquor license. Um, I will, oh, wait a minute, what date is that? It says zero twenty-four twenty-two-three.
It's the ninth, that was my fault.
What is it?
It's the ninth.
So it's nine twenty-four twenty-two-three?
Yes.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve open session minutes, March 14th, 2023, March 21st, 2023, March 28th, 2023. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. We are chugging along. Did anybody have any burning deep desire to give a committee update?
The Highway Committee, we did, Building Committee, we did meet and we're, where's Lisa? What are we waiting for? He was gonna.
So the, the Highway Building Committee did vote to no longer consider the Hawks Ave as a potential site for the new, for the Highway Department.
Oh, okay.
And there was discussion and a vote to move forward with the survey for the 797 Indian Head location where the highway now stands.
It's pending the town meeting.
Pending town meeting approval of the fund.
All right, well, good. That's some good progress. Thanks for that update, Mrs. Green. Anything else? All right, fantastic. That brings us to the Town Administrator Report. And at the risk of being rude, do you think you can pull that off in 10 minutes or less, Mrs. Green?
I think so.
Okay.
All right, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. So I'm happy to report the McQuan demolition bid reposting goes live tomorrow, April 5th. It's gonna be on the central register. It will be in the Whitman Hanson Express on Thursday, April 6th and on ConBys. I had a little issue today trying to get it onto the website. I will be here early tomorrow morning to get that up on the website. It's quite a lengthy bid because not only does it have the bid documents, a draft agreement, it will now include the pre-demolition asbestos survey as well. So moving forward, we have a bid deadline of May 4th. So hopefully as of that date, we will know what it will cost us. My days, I've been, we've been getting a lot of public records requests lately, so I've been spending a lot of time with generating fee letters and getting those out and responding in compliant with the law. And a lot of my time has been really focusing on the annual town meeting warrant and the special town meeting warrant, putting those together. There, there are still some loose ends to tie up, but they're as complete as I could possibly get them as of 4 o'clock today. I'm happy to report that we completed the interviews for the Veteran Service Officer. We have a fantastic candidate who will be, we will be bringing forward to the board on next Tuesday, the 11th, to be met and hopefully appointed. He is highly decorated and I did send an email that included his applicant, his resume with his DD-14 that outlines two tours in Iraq, two tours in, he's, he's served in Hawaii, Germany. He's received a number of medals, awards, ribbons, including work on terrorism. Highly decorated and great personality. So I think he's gonna be really a wonderful, he's gonna be a wonderful addition to our team. And Tim White really, you know, basically he was all on board with this candidate. So look forward to bringing him before the board next week. Also, we have completed our interviews for the part-time Planning Board Administrative Assistant position. We have reached out to a candidate today. We're just waiting on confirmation of whether she's still interested in the position and hope to bring her forward during the April 28th meeting before the board. Also, too, work on the back of the town hall continues, is almost complete. The banging and the hammering has quieted down a little bit. They are concentrating on applying the plaque board that's on the back. It looks pretty nice. It's a pretty sturdy material. So hopefully we will not have to do this again for a very long time. And no worries about any further water leaks or rotted wood underneath. Charlie, again, has really stepped up with overseeing this process, making sure it's all going smoothly. So great job on his part. Town Hall doors, the front doors are installed. They are now electronically able to be locked electronically. So nobody has to stay late at night with a key in their hand, walk to the front door and manually lock them with a key. All of our doors are now automatic with locking and unlocking, which is fantastic. We've, we've entered into the 20th century. So excellent job. Again, Steve and Charlie put a lot of work into making that project come to life. And I just, I would like to circle back on a topic we discussed basically on, last week, on the leave being printed on employees' pay stubs. I just wanna circle back around that and just kind of make a clarifying statement. The Assistant Treasurer will not be responsible for verifying leave. Basically, she is handed information and she inputs it. It's not gonna fall on her shoulders to look at this and double check if someone's leave is correct. Cause she, that is not gonna be within her purview. That will fall with the town departments and the employee to make sure. So I just wanted to clarify that note. I did have a meeting with the treasure collector and the Assistant Treasurer and they, what they're gonna do is they're gonna draft up some bullet points with a list of steps and then we're gonna come up with a policy for that process. So I just wanted to clarify that and bring that to the table. And that, it concludes my Town Administrator Report for today.
Okay. Well, that is fantastic. The only.
Did you have something?
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Did you have something, Joe?
No.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Joe.
I was gonna ask about the back of the town. It's a different color, the board that they're putting up. Is that gonna stay that way until the rest of the, or are we gonna paint it? Or what is the future of the?
No, it is a different color. Unfortunately, over the years, colors change. That was the closest that they could get. So hopefully as we move to renovate and update the rest of Town Hall, we would match it to that color.
We're gonna keep using that color any other time we repair it?
I hope we would coordinate so it doesn't look like a crazy patchwork.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely not. You know, unfortunately, the same colors from, you know, 10, 15, 20 years ago, we don't have today.
Well, even if you did, that, that material will bleach out and whatever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Basically facing the water with the sun, you know, basically, it will fade fairly quickly.
Okay.
Having the sun reflect off the water.
Yeah, so just as far as the policy goes, I'm glad that you're gonna have a policy. Do you want us to take a look at this, or is this something that you're just gonna put together and implement?
Oh, no, it, it will be, it will be presented to the board.
We'll vote on it.
Yes, it will be presented to the board, yes. I'm just waiting on the treasure collector and Assistant Treasurer to come up with the bullet points and then we can, we can work collaboratively on coming up with a policy.
Okay. And where, where is the policy gonna, gonna live? Is it gonna live electronically or?
We'll have it electronic. We'll have a copy in our office and the treasure collector will have a copy of it as well.
Okay.
And then hopefully it will be cooked into the overall thing that we're hiring the consultant to.
Policies and procedures, yes, yes.
Anything else, Miss? Okay, anything else? Okay, great. Great update. Thank you so much, Ms. Green. And then we've got, I think time to just fit in one little thing, which is the voting, the annual election hours. And we've got a, in your packet, you've got a memorandum from Ms. Sloan, our town clerk. At the April 4th, 2023 Select Board Meeting with the Board, please vote the annual May Town Election Hours and sign the election warrant. And there is a motion that I need somebody to read. Which says.
I make a motion to help voting for the May 20th Annual Town Election being held at the Hanson Middle School to begin at 10:00 AM and end at 5:00 PM.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. And then we need to sign, Lynn, do you have something for us to sign? All right, great. And with that, I.
There's one other, there is, we have number, let's see, we have a license, number 5, 2023 Annual Licensing Class 2, Auto Deal License for Auto Express.
Thank you, Ms. Green. I probably would have skipped over that. And now Auto Express, where are they located?
That is the location on Franklin Street.
Is this the subject of much debate and discussion with our building inspector?
Yes, it is. And Mr. Glass did come into our office. He had basically just come from an inspection of that property and the property's been cleaned up to his, I don't know what's his liking, but to his liking.
And do we have something from Mr. Glass representing that in writing?
No, I do not.
I do not want to vote on it until I have something in writing from Mr. Glass. Huh? I, I would like to have something from Mr. Glass in writing that he has inspected and he, it is to his satisfaction.
This is the same guy that causes trouble every year.
Every year.
Yeah.
Every year. It's like deja vu. Here we go again. So, and we support small businesses, but they gotta comply with the regulations. And we seem to have a little issue over there with that. So we could get a memo, brief memorandum, just can say exactly what you just told us, but we need it in writing.
Absolutely.
Okay. With that, I will begin the, and of course I can't find my agenda. So that's super convenient. Oh, here we go. So any other items that I've missed? I think we've clipped along. Obviously, we'll have to reopen and close the warrant after we have our, our hearing. But I must say we're making tremendous progress this evening. Yep. Okay, so with that, is there language that I need to read, Ms. Green, about opening the hearing for the?
All right, let's see, I don't.
I mean, I can just read what is on here, which is.
Basically addition to the pole and the wire?
Yes. Okay, all right. I will, we're going to begin the hearing for National Grid to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along the, along and across the following public way, Franklin Street. Install one SO pole on Franklin Street beginning at a point approximately zero feet of the center line of the intersection of Franklin Street and driveway for 201 Franklin Street and continually approximately 10 feet in a southwest direction. National Grid proposes to install one new SO pole, push brace, parentheses P42-89, location approximately as shown on plan attached. I will entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Okay, we're opening the hearing. Is, are you here? Okay, I was hoping, somebody was here. Somebody was here to talk about it. Yeah, we would love to hear from you. Yep.
My name is Bill Gillespie. I'm with National Grid and we're proposing to set a pole. It's a push brace, so it's gonna help hold up the existing pole. The pole is being pulled because of the wires.
Okay.
So to avoid the pole coming over, we're proposing to put a push brace. So it's gonna be at an angle like this. It's gonna be holding up the pole. Roughly, the base of it should be about 10 feet from the existing pole and coming up at an angle.
Okay.
So just for protection, keeping the pole from falling over.
Is, does anybody have any questions? And I would ask the audience if there were any questions from the audience, but there's nobody here. So I don't think it's tremendously controversial. Anybody have any concerns or questions? Ms. Green, anything?
No, this is a, this is a pretty, this is a common practice for National Grid to come before the board just to have a hearing regarding any new pole that they're gonna install in town. Just to make sure that they reach out and make sure there's no concerns with residents and answer any questions that they have.
Okay. Did you, I'm sorry.
I have the time.
Okay.
I, I just like the idea of being proactive instead of reactive on this to take care of a problem before it's a problem, right?
Definitely, yeah. I will entertain a motion to approve National Grid's petition to install one SO pole on Franklin Street beginning at a point approximately zero feet of center line of the intersection of Franklin Street and driveway for 201 Franklin Street and continually approximately 10 feet in a southwest direction. I'm entertaining that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to reopen annual warrant. I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weeks. I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Fantastic. Now we're moving on. To reopen annual warrant, I will entertain a motion to reopen the, well, special and annual town meeting warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. Ms. Green?
Okay. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. So last, the last Tuesday's meeting, the board went through both of the special town meeting warrant and the annual town meeting warrant and voted to either place and/or place in or recommend articles. That was a, that was a very draft version that you had. And over the past week, we have concentrated many, many hours on gathering some of the missing information, adding it into the warrant, adding articles in to the warrant that are required to be here, moving some articles around just so there's a better flow regarding their, the subject of that article. And so before you, which one would you like to move forward with?
Let's start with special since it's small.
So the, with the special, what we have that's a little bit different. And Article number seven, what we did was we, we took some of the single articles that you, that were in the annual and we put them all together in a single article, just to have a placeholder. Now, there's two articles on here, I'm sorry, two line items under Article seven, which is the Whitman Hanson Regional School District, the middle school, an elevator repair and a septic system repair. Now, these came before the board at one point over the summer or I want to say or at one point after town meeting in May. And I honestly have no recollection of why these were not put on the October special town meeting warrant. The article that came from the schools for the security systems for the doors after they had, fell victim to that cyber attack. That was an emergency that was placed on the warrant for that. Again, I, I have no recollection of why these two were not placed. It could have been that these were determined not to be an emergency to fall under the October special town meeting and now they are coming before the May annual town meeting in the special.
Okay, but these are reimbursed.
These are reimbursed, exactly. The other items that are on here were in our annual under free cash. But if the board may consider, some, these are one-time purchases with one-time money. And again, apart from line item number four, which is up for discussion and clarification, but I wanted to at least have a placeholder in here. I've, I've placed ARPA money for the technology portions, which would include, again, it's pending a discussion that will happen at the next meeting. Our line number four, number five, and number six, they have to do with all, with our technology.
So that's why you're proposing ARPA, because it is one-time. It's not something on an ongoing basis.
That's correct. That's correct. The initial costs for line four, five, and six are one-time money. And it's not gonna be a regular cost. And again, I just, I wanted to put a placeholder in there for line number four, pending the discussion that will happen at the next meeting for clarification.
Okay, did anybody have any questions?
I, I have questions. Are those capital improvement questions?
They don't, well, they don't fall under the threshold of the $35,000.
Eight, I don't, eight does, but I don't think that water is, has got their own account. So I don't think they have to come to you guys for capital improvements.
Right, exactly. And that, that's gonna come out of the retainer, the water retainer as funding source.
About protective clothing, we discussed.
We did, but it's not, it just doesn't rise to $35,000. That's the only thing.
And then underneath that, in the line items, it provides the explanations for each of those line items. And as far as the Fire Department with protective clothing, that is for the new hires that will be coming on board. They need to get their protective clothing as soon as they, they start their, their jobs with us.
So how much, throughout this entire, this and the annual town meeting, how many, how much ARPA funds are being used? Cause I think it'd be important for us to put out there at town meeting that we have a, it's a. I mean, you can't get any more one, one-time hopefully than something like ARPA funds. So I'd like to know, I think it's, it's an important revenue question to ask. Just like we would talk about free cash, we'd start the meeting off talking about how much free cash we have. We should talk about how much ARPA funds we have to start and then how much we are going to end with. Because what I'd like to show, cause I, I'm really, I'm really focused on especially coming up with a new budget. We have to start talking about next year's budget like now. And I would like to illustrate how much money we are actually supporting to fund the town with money that we are literally never gonna see again.
Exactly.
So that's, I think that's gonna be important.
So our ARPA money right now that is allocated for the town of Hanson from the Plymouth County bucket is $1,191,040.
But that's not how much is in the account, right? Cause we've already spent a good chunk of it.
No, that's how much is in that.
Is in the Plymouth County.
That we, that we have touched?
That's the Plymouth County.
We have not touched, right.
I know that.
Two accounts.
Yeah.
No, I have the answer.
We, we have not touched this money.
That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
There's a, that full balance is available.
Okay, thank you.
To us. And then we also have the money, the money from the Treasury, which is, which we do have. We, we received two disbursements from the Treasury. And that is, let's say it was two. And that is, let's say it was two disbursements of about $514,000.
It was, it was a little over a million bucks.
Yeah, it was just over a million.
It's about a million, $1,294,000.
Right.
So we have also not spent any of that money either. Um, oh, I'm sorry, we, during the last town meeting, the special town meeting in October, we allocated $100,000 for our, from ARPA for the fire station feasibility, um, we had our $85,000 for the generator for the library and the senior center.
Right.
And then $200,000 for the HVAC system.
Right.
We did put in applications for the HVAC system and the generator, of which Plymouth County rejected both.
Right.
We have to actually spend the money.
Right.
Um, well, for the HVAC system, and then apply for reimbursement. They rejected the generator on the, um, argument that that does not fit within the, um, accepted use for any of the categories.
Yeah.
For that, under the Plymouth County. Now, we can certainly use the treasury money that we have in the bank, because that can be used for any general government services, we just have to reason our use of that money. But as of right now, we haven't actually spent the money, we haven't done the projects and spent any of the money.
Right, we haven't literally spent the money, but we've allocated thousands of dollars.
How much is allocated?
So right now, we had one.
We have 1.7 million left.
Right.
Of the non-Plymouth County money?
No, because that is.
We haven't spent any of that, so we've got the $1,961,040.
That, that's got, we've gotta jump through major hoops to get that money, and we need to get strategic about how we're gonna spend it, because we have to spend it by, is it 2025?
26.
Okay.
We have to allocate it by 2026.
Okay, so we, we need to get popping on that, but in the interim, the easier money for us to spend is the other bucket. How much unencumbered money is in that other bucket?
Let me get that exact amount, I think, or send me that exact amount.
Non-Plymouth County.
Yes.
Treasury.
Uh, no, it's, it's, it's more than that, hold on.
You were the kid that would, uh, guess how many jelly beans were in the pot.
All right, so we, we got two disbursements.
No, it's a great point, Joe, to bring, you know.
Yeah.
I would love to see something on the screen that says, this is what we had at the beginning, you guys voted this stuff, and you can see the money going down, so they can actually see that their votes do something. I don't know that.
I can have Eric put something like that together.
Well, let's talk about whether that's the right format.
No, I don't know that it is.
But, well, well, I, I hear what you're saying, uh, but I, I'm not, that, I'm not sure Sean would be hip to us doing that in the middle of town meeting. It might be something we could do at a select board meeting.
That's true.
And have it up on the screen, but it's probably not the right form for a town meeting. We could do a, a handout, we could definitely do a handout. Um, yep, that would be appropriate. Um, okay, so, Ms. Green, some of these articles were not in here when we last opened up the special town meeting warrant, so what I think we ought to do is, is there anything else you needed to call out in the special town meeting warrant?
Um, I think those were the only items.
Okay.
That were, um, they were taken out, they were removed, they were removed from the annual and placed in the special.
So we're going to have to, which is why I wanted to open these up, we're going to have to, unfortunately and painfully, go through and vote to place and recommend, to the extent possible, the articles here, so, um, and then we'll have to do the, yes, so right now, we're working on special, then we'll get to the main, um, the annual. Um, so the first article is bills, Article One, I will entertain a motion to place.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Article Two, to see if the town will vote from free cash.
No, it's beautiful, just a moment.
I'm sorry.
Do what I did last time, so I can.
You know what, um, I'm wondering if we can get one person to move and a one, second one to second, so then Lynn doesn't have to figure out who's doing it.
Yeah. You're suggesting Joe and me, instead of.
Sure.
Well, that's what, that's what I should say, I, I would just, can we, can we, instead of doing two votes per article, can we just make, take one vote to place and recommend?
We can do that, unless somebody says they object to recommending, and then we'll separate it.
Right, then we'll stop.
That's totally fine. You ready? Okay. Um, Article Two, um, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $60,000, um, and move it to fire and ambulance salaries to replenish the budget. I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Article Three, uh, Ms. Green, this wording is very funky to me, and it just might be the way that I'm reading it, but I can't, my brain explodes when I read this sentence, "This money should be available for immediate after funding approval for spring grading." What does that mean?
I have to carry that in there.
So that, so. What does after funding, should be available for immediate after funding approval? What's immediate after funding approval?
So that, so that means, um, basically highway has a short window to grade the private roads.
Is he saying immediate use? Are we missing a word in here?
Or could we skip the four?
Immediate.
Available immediately after funding approval for spring grading.
I think it's missing, available for immediate use.
Use.
I think is what is happening, okay. My brain feels a little better. Um, all right, so, um, free cash and the amount of $15,000 for, um, the grading, um, I will entertain a motion to place and to recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, fantastic. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to transfer any available funding, $73,560, to fund the overtime cost to maintain adequate staffing levels. Um, I will entertain a motion to place and recommend, but before I do that, Ms. Green, um, given the severity of our economic situation, are we certain that this full amount is needed by the chief?
So, this money here, he may be able to, um, bring this budget down, um, and also there was, there was a possibility of Article Number Two, the $60,000, he may be able to cut in half to 30, we're still waiting on confirmation on that, so, yes, these are being worked on for possibly lowering these amounts.
Okay, I mean, so, so worst case, this, they'd be lowered. So if we feel, I just, you know, I know it's petty, but in, in aggregate, that's $133,000, and I'm just, you know, trying to make sure that we're really, you know, making sure that, that this is needed. Um, okay, I will entertain a motion to, um, place and to recommend, Article Four.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? All right, and do you expect to know by next week whether that's coming down or not?
We'll work on it.
Okay, great, uh, good answer. Um, Article Five, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash $10,000 to fund financial analysis, um, and I will entertain a motion to place and recommend, but Ms. Green, I am wondering if we, I just feel like this explanation needs a little bit more, um, fleshing out, like, all of what you've said is true, um, oh, maybe it's enough, it's fine, I'll entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, Article Six, $10,000, um, to hire Old Colony Planning Council to update master plan. I will, and, and is this our article or planning? Um, this is the, well, I thought it was planning that was asking for this.
No, it really would be our office, because we did receive the grant, and then I, uh, worked with the office, um, OCPC is, is giving us another $30,000 grant, um, so the $10,000 is what the town has to come up with out of that money.
No, but what I'm saying is, regardless of your involvement in it, in reality, the master plan is for the planning board.
Okay, so we can change that.
So I think it's a planning board article. Uh, but I, I'm fine keeping it this way, if the planning board didn't vote on it, and they haven't voted to recommend it, it's just unusual for it to be the select boards. I, I will vote to, uh, place and recommend, uh, Article Six, I will.
So moved.
Okay, great. Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Um, Article Seven, um, and this is reimbursements, and Ms. Green just went over this, I will entertain a motion to place and recommend Article Seven.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, and that wraps up the special. Um, that brings us to the annual, um.
Do we need to close the special?
Sorry?
Do we need to, uh, motion to close the special?
Well, uh, we'll close them both together. Thanks, though, Lynn. Keep me honest, keep me on my toes, um, okay. Um, and Article One, uh, to hear, so it's basically the town report, um, I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yep.
If I may, just make a, um, just an opening statement on the annual.
Yes.
So this, this, um, what you have before you, um, there's been some changes and some moving around of articles. So what you will see, in the articles that the board voted last week, to either place and/or recommend, it's, it's in italics right below the article, so if you'll see Article One, it says the select board voted 5-0 to place last week, so this kinda gives you what happened last week with particular, with your articles.
I got you, okay.
Um, the articles that were not in here last week, there is no italics underneath.
All right, so in other words, we don't need that motion on Article One.
That's right.
Okay, great.
Exactly.
So this is gonna, this is gonna speed things up significantly.
Yeah.
Um, Article Two were good, Article.
Unless you want to recommend.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, place, yep.
Yeah.
Um, Article, well, I mean, yeah, um, good, good point. I'm pretty sure we voted to place and recommend Article One, it's the town report.
I don't think we, we made a motion to recommend anything.
Well, out of an abundance of caution, we'll have to do it anyway. Um, I will entertain a motion to recommend Article One.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to, um, recommend Article Two, Article Two, which I should probably be saying, um, to authorize the treasurer collector to enter into compensating balance agreements during fiscal year 2024, as permitted by MGL, uh, Chapter 44, Section 53F. I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Um, Article Three, to see if the town will vote to fix the salary compensation of all elected officers and committees, and its town clerk, um, and it's, um, it's the two and a half, so I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Oh, if I, if I may, actually, um, this is a, this is a 3%.
3%, okay. Hmm, interesting, I thought I, I did the math on that earlier, it was two and a half. Um, I might be wrong. Um, okay, so did we just vote on that?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, Article, uh, Four, to see if the town will revoke provisions of Chapter 44, and this is the, um, so that it's not an enterprise, um, fund anymore, um, we voted to place and recommend. Uh, to, Article Five, to determine what sums of money, the town will raise it appropriate by taxation, and it gives a whole list of things, um, and that will be, we voted to place it, I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Six, to see if the town will raise it appropriate or transfer the sum of $35,000 from computer services to add to Technologies Department to hire a part-time person. Um, we voted to place, um, I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Um, Article Seven, to determine whether the town will raise an appropriation by taxation from available sums, a sum of money for the purpose of paying the town's assessed share. Now, keep in mind, there's no dollar amount in here, um, we have to have an article to fund the schools. Um, the dollar amount will come later. Ms. Green, at what point would we be voting on the dollar amount at our next meeting?
Um, well, if that, it depends on where the, the board lands and what they want to do. What we have planned is in the informational warrant, um, if the board still wants to continue with the 3.75 assessment, we would put that number, uh, we would put the number for the, um, schools, and we would have an article in the informational warrant that will have this information in it. Um, also, our town council also, um, suggested and recommended, also, and said as an option, um, we can place it in the motion, for the motion to read the dollar amount, so there's a, there's a couple of different options here on that.
I want to try to be as clear with people as we possibly can. So there's no ambiguity, if I'm sitting there, I pick up the warrant, or I pick up the informational warrant, I'm crystal clear, the school asked for this, but the town says that they can't afford it, here's what the town's saying they can afford. Uh, whatever format that looks like, that's what I think we need.
Okay.
Do other people agree with that, or?
Yeah, yeah, I was just gonna say, I'll make a motion to place, but I, I would not make a motion to make a decision on anything beyond that, because we have to place it.
We have to place it, and I believe we can recommend up till the night of.
Oh, we've done that before.
Yeah, yeah, we have done that.
We don't need to recommend anything.
Yep, yep, yep. Um, okay, so I will entertain a motion to place.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Article Eight, um, to enter into a contract, um, for Chapter 90 funds, um, I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Article Nine, um, this is the various revolving accounts, assessors, parks and field, library, senior center, senior center piece, conservation, commission, and Thomas Mill, I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article Ten, uh, we already voted to place and recommend, so we're chugging right along.
Um, actually, Madam Chair, if I may?
Okay.
Um, one, a, a small correction, um, that was discovered, and it has to do with, under Section 11B, administrative and/or full-time, um, A, the executive assistant, so at the October special town meeting, uh, salary range from $17 to $34 was approved, um, we have updated that to $28 to $38 for the special town meeting, so, um, there is an update there, and basically, it was in here last week, but it was not bolded and italicized, so it was easily missed, um, so we have fixed that in this, um, in this warrant. And as well, um, on Section 11C, part-time positions, um, if you'll notice, on page six, at the top, we have added, um, line FF, which is the select board part-time administrative assistant to the town administrator and select board. So we have added that, and we have added the, um, salary range for that position.
Okay.
So bringing that to your attention. And the, somehow, Section 11E, the call firefighters and officers, um, somehow was deleted and did not make it into the warrant last week, it is caught and it is here, so those are the, uh, additions and the differences in this article this, today.
Okay, so I will, given all of those various changes, um, I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, I took a bit of wind out of my sails, let's see, all right, Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the following sums of money, and this is Recreation Department, um, and, hmm, that's, okay, so I will entertain a motion to place and recommend.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, Article 12, uh, blah, 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 this is the, um, what I will lovingly refer to as the Don Howard, um, article, um, slightly tweaked, but it's in the spirit of, of the Don Howard article. Um, and we voted to place, and we were going to wait to see what the planning board said, and Ms. Green, did the planning board vote to support this?
Yes, um, I do, there is a letter that I have from the town planner that outlines, Yes, um, I do, there is a letter that I have from the town planner that outlines, um, that the bo, the board did support, did vote to support, um, this, this article.
Okay, so in light of that, we voted to place it, I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
All in favor? Okay, great. Article Thirteen, uh, blah, blah, this is the in-ground pool, the filling in, um, article, and we voted to, uh, place, and again, uh, do we, I assume that the planning board voted to recommend this, it was their article after all. Ms. Green, do we know?
Um, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't know on this particular one.
Okay. Um, hmm, well, since we can vote to recommend up until that, I, I need you on all the planning ones to double check with them where, where they landed.
Okay.
Um, that, actually, that's the last one, so just on that one. Um, so we'll, we've already voted to place it, so we're gonna have to wait on the recommendation. Um, Article Fourteen, uh, to see if the town will vote to adopt the capital improvement measures as presented by the Capital Improvement Committee. Um, I will entertain, oh, we already placed a recommend, so we're good on that. Um, to see if the town will transfer from free cash the sum of, sum of $25,000. We needed more information on this. Have we gotten any more information?
So there is some more information on it, and it's in the explanation, so apparently when they went to do the replacement for the wheel, um, there, and it was initially thought that the stand was in good condition, then when they removed the wheel, that revealed the rotted wood, um, and so the funds were necessary to rebuild the stand and attach the wheel to, to rebuild, to the rebuilt stand. Um, so that's the information that we had gotten. So initially, they thought the stand was in good condition, discovered the rotted wood, and this is the money to rebuild that, um, stand so that the wheel can be safely attached to that.
Now, I don't know if I'm being petty here, and I need a, I need a sanity check from you guys, but $25,000, when we're in a fiscal situation, and, and I appreciate that the Thomas Mill guys, I, I appreciate we've got a committee, and that they're looking at what needs to be done, and I appreciate that we already voted on that wheel, but I think timing is everything, and in my gut, I feel like this needs to be deferred to potentially October town meeting. I don't know what people think about that.
Or can we place and not recommend?
Well, if we place it, then it stands a chance of getting funded at town meeting.
But if the town's people want to fund it.
But Ed, we are, we are the ones who have to decide whether we think this is the best use of town money.
Okay.
That's what it boils down to. We, we have an obligation to decide whether this is something we, yeah, Mr. Hitt.
Thinking about it, I agree with you, Laura, and I'm not sure what Joe is thinking right now. Um, you were looking up, Joe, but.
Do my thinking.
This could be, uh, it's a one-time situation with the ARPA money. It's 25 grand, and I remember this coming up at a town meeting.
It's very controversial.
Where we spent either 15 or 17,000 to get the wheel fixed.
Yeah.
And this is a perfect example of one of those projects that you need to look into it before, you know, it should have been the stand and the wheel. And at the time, it was just the wheel.
But you don't know what you don't know, so, yeah.
But if we don't do it now, next May, or even October, it could be 30,000.
So are you saying, use ARPA funds and do this?
Well, it's a.
We have over $2 million.
It is a community landmark.
It is.
It's something that people like.
Yeah.
And I, I think that that's a good use for one-time money.
It is one-time money.
Is it one?
Yeah, I just wanna say, really quick, because this is the way I'm looking at pretty much everything this year and probably next year as well. We still don't know if we're coming in at 3.75 and we have a $600,000 deficit, or if we're gonna be stuck paying more than that. Um, right now, I, I, I come from the place of, um, under normal circumstances, I would, I, my motion would normally be, because I, I love the people that are overseeing this, I think it's a great job, they should put this on here. And under normal circumstances, my, I would actually make a motion to place and defer to town meeting to see, to Ed's point, what it is that they want to spend their money on. We still don't know what the dollar amount for the school, and we don't have a, a means until that day to, we have to be super conservative right now.
That's why I brought that up.
Yeah, so I, I, I agree with what everybody's saying in an ideal world, I'd even like to use ARPA funds for those things, but we don't know if the school assessment's gonna come in.
We may need to use it for others.
But that's my point, we, it might come in higher, we might have to use one-time funds to operate the town right now.
Could I ask a question? Couldn't this be something, if people, they could crowdfund for it, or something like that? Couldn't the Thomas Mill people fundraise and crowdfund for this?
They could. It, it, it kills me to not.
I know.
There's some rules around, around fundraising for town, for.
Could've come out of free cash.
But they, if they, I don't know if there's a Friends of Thomas Mill, or like the Hanson Historic Society.
Right, that's what I was thinking, something like that.
I'm just thinking, at the end of the day, this, just to come full circle to today's meeting, we can't make decisions on this right now, because we haven't communicated up until this point on what the budget is. We don't know, so we're, we're handcuffed.
That's why I brought it up, because it just seemed, along with the two fire things, I was like, these are, seem a little malleable, and I just, uh.
Well, then that's why I thought if we use the ARPA funds.
That would, that would alleviate it.
It's not gonna matter what the number is for the school, if we use those one-time funds. And Joe, you said that we may have to use.
Yeah.
Those funds to operate the town.
Yeah, because we started off the conversation by saying we may not even be able to fund any capital improvements this year to offset the 600,000, so if we still want to do those capital improvements, guess what, we're coming out of the ARPA funds. Possibly, I don't know, or even the Plymouth County funds, I have no idea.
We'll have to talk, yeah.
So if we go into that, and, you know, we might as well open up the whole thing here, if we're not gonna do 25,000 for the wheel, why are we adding a position to the IT? And I know Steve needs it desperately, but that's another 35,000.
Everything's on the table.
Everything is.
Everything's on the table.
And, and right up to the day of town meeting, those decisions might be in real-time game decisions we have to come up with.
But if it's between those two, it would be the employee over putting the wheel back on. I mean, that's a given, so, I mean, if you wanted.
Well, I mean, for you, somebody else might, you know, we each have a vote. I, I agree with you, but I'm just saying, you know.
But I would rather place and recommend instead of defer to town meeting, because you can get those people that say, wait a minute, we got one-time ARPA funds? I don't want to spend it on fixing the, the stand.
Yeah.
And, I mean, ultimately, the people have to decide, but even if it's three to two, or two to three to recommend and not recommend, it, it's gonna cost us more money in the end.
Here's, here's my position, I agree with everything you guys said. My thing is, they haven't had this piece for a while, and I appreciate what they're doing. I would just like to say, could we, could we pump the brakes and see where we're at after this town meeting, and if we have the money, we'd love to support you doing this in October. I, I just don't see how that hurts anything. It's just, you know, I, 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 I feel like it's the prudent thing to do. It's only 25,000, and I, I really hate to do that, because I know when committees are like working hard, I, I, you know.
Thing is, you say it's only 25, but we're talking, it, it's only 25,000 if we had, even, even if we had a break-even budget. You know, it's not, it's not just 25,000. It's a drop in the, in the bucket compared to a, you know, a $25 million budget, but it's not a drop in the bucket, and we're already in the negative so far. It's tough.
So, so do, what do people want to do? Do we want to talk to them and remove it?
I want to use ARPA and get it done.
You want to use ARPA? Ms. Mrs. Rain, where do you stand on that?
I'm kind of, sorry, I'm kind of in Jim's camp, I'd like to see it fixed.
Ms. Green?
Unfortunately, we, I don't think we could reason using ARPA. ARPA can be used for general government services.
Right.
I don't think we could reason using ARPA money for a stand for a wheel. Um, I, I don't, I think we would, just as we, just as we got, um, rejected for the generator, which we put forth a ver, a pretty good argument, um, they rejected it, so I would be really, really cautious of using ARPA for the stand for the wheel.
So we could use ARPA money to fund the IT of position of 35,000.
You can, yeah, you can use AR, you can use ARPA money for any general government services.
So if we use the ARPA money for one year for that IT position, we would have the 25,000 in free cash to fix the wheel, or to fix the stand to get the wheel up that's been sitting on the side of that building for about four years.
Can I offer an alternative?
No.
Um, I'm being, I'm being, uh, you know, whatever. Um, I, this seems like the type of thing that if we reached out to our state representatives, they might be able to get an earmark for, it's a very modest amount.
Mm-hmm.
And, and Thomas Mill is iconic.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I feel like we'd have a pretty good shot at maybe getting some help there from our brethren at the State House.
So for me, this comes, becomes a question of, do we place or not place? Because my, I, I would make the argument that if we do place, we defer to town meeting, because these are taxpayers' dollars, and they have to decide whether or not they're gonna fund, I, just to pick on this idea, but IT or, or the wheel, because it might come down to that. I think this is a defer.
I, I get that, and you and Ed both have made that point, and I understand that, but we also have a responsibility to vet what the hell we're putting on the warrant. So what my question is tonight to you guys is, if push comes to shove, and we, and we really are like getting down to, to this dollar amount, which we are right now, I mean, we're already having to cut, is, is this, you know, um, think about all of the other competing needs that we've got, do people want to place and, and, and recommend? I will entertain whatever motion you guys want to make. I personally don't want to place or recommend it, I think it needs to win.
I agree with you, but I also have a little problem with equating a salaried position to an object. I mean, pick something else in here that we're, that we've got, pick something.
I think he was just doing dollars.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
Your leather chair.
Okay, take my leather chair, I don't know, but you see what I'm saying?
I think he was just saying dollar amounts.
I would rather go after another piece of equipment than a position. The position's more important to me than the water wheel.
Yeah.
We have, and Joe, I'm not sure who said it, Joe or Laura, but we have a committee now for the Thomas Mill.
Yeah.
It is our duty to place this article, not recommend, but it is our duty to place it, because we have a committee, they've only got one, uh, article in the whole thing. So whether we agree, I mean, let's face it, we know the Finance Committee is gonna be a four, uh, 5-0 vote.
It's gonna be no.
Again.
Well, and, and in all honesty, Nathaniel Mill, um, did propose several things to capital improvements, which you guys, it didn't make the cut, because, you know, of where we're at.
Yeah, budgetarily, I just, uh, um, anyway, I mean, I know to, to, to speed things up, we are the, you know, we determined that we're gonna make the motion the second or whatever. Anybody can make a motion to place, though. Um, I have no problem placing it, because I, I come from the same view that we have a duty to kind of put it on and see where people want to do this. And we can also, at town meeting, when the actual school assessment comes in, we can see where we made the cut, we can pass over this as well, if we wanted to, or recommend that Nathaniel does.
I'm hearing that you guys, that at least three of you guys want to place it. Um, so I will entertain that motion.
Oh, and I, I will make a motion to place and defer to town meeting on the recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
So if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, so with the informational warrant, um, what we would normally do is, is, um, when we put in the informational warrant, we put the, that the board either recommends or not recommend. So if you could take a vote to either to not recommend, we could put this, voted to place, but, um, Select Board voted not to recommend.
We've, we've done this in the past.
We have done the defer to town.
So you've left it and deferred, okay.
No, we, we write in there, defer to town.
Defer to town, we have done that.
Okay, very good.
When it's proposed by another committee, uh, you know.
Okay.
And, and sort of we're trying to be Switzerland on it, then, you know, that's what we do.
Very good.
Um, okay, so was there a second? Oh, you seconded, okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
So that, I did not, I'm not.
We never asked about opposed.
Well, all, all opposed.
I knew that, I knew there was gonna be one.
Yep.
All right, so three, two.
Whatever.
It's okay.
I'm, I'm swinging in the breeze here, I'm, it's okay.
I'll be here in October saying, I told you, now it's 32,000.
Uh, okay.
Wait a second, wait, you, you voted against placing it.
No, I voted for placing it.
I voted to place it.
Oh, then I voted to place it also.
Yeah, you should be for one.
Do I need to take another vote?
Yes, I think, I don't think he voted.
Something got lost through translation.
So I made a motion, just to reiterate, I made a motion to place this article and defer.
Confer to town meeting.
Yeah, to defer to town meeting.
Okay.
I'm in.
And seconded it.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed.
Oh.
Awkward, okay. Um, Article 16, um, the community preservation, we, uh, voted to place, and we didn't vote to recommend simply because the dollar amounts hadn't been plugged in by Eric yet, but they're there. So I will entertain a motion to recommend Article 16.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, Article 17, um, we're good on that, Article 18, we're good on that, Article 19, good on that, 20, all set, 21, all set, uh, 22, um, what is, we didn't vote to recommend. Uh, Ms. Green, I had asked you about some earmarks and grants that we got, that I thought would probably cover this $1,500.
We, we haven't gotten all the answers for all of those yet.
Okay.
Still working on them, but we haven't gotten all the answers.
I mean, it's a very modest amount, but I just thought if there's another source of funding, then, you know, that would be great.
Yeah.
Um, so we don't need to recommend that yet, we can wait until, unless somebody wants to recommend, it is 1,500.
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, um, sec, all in favor? Okay, great. Um, great. Article 23, uh, we've placed and recommended, Article 24, placed and recommended, Article 25, placed and recommended, and, um, did we get any answers? Again, um, 7,500 for the Fragmites, I think we've got a responsibility, in fact, I think we're contractually obligated on Smitty's Bog to, um, to take care of the Fragmite.
Yes.
Um, so.
Can I ask a question about Fragmites?
Yeah, yeah.
How does it get there? That's so isolated.
It's invasive, I, I'm guessing.
They're everywhere.
Is it just, is it a bird spreading it?
I'm guessing it's birds, yeah.
Okay, I always wondered that, because it's, it's everywhere.
They are everywhere. Um, so, um, vote to place, do we vote to recommend, knowing that it is a contractual obligation?
Make a motion to recommend.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Now, Article 40, Article 27, the 40,000, I was going over this in my mind, and Conservation is doing a lot of fantastic work, and I definitely want to support them. 40,000 is a lot, um, particularly in light of where we're at right now. Um, and I, and again, I'm, you know, because it's saying signage, notices, property enhancements, I mean, the whole kitchen sink is in here of anything they could potentially do, um, all of which are needed, and, and I know we've got a lot of, um, you know, conservation, um, property. I, I wish I had a more, a clearer picture of specifically of all these tasks that they've listed, what are they planning on doing with this 40,000?
They are planning on making a, a brochure for that, would you be interested in seeing that sooner or later?
I had asked to have the Chair of Conservation come and talk to us about what they were planning on doing with the 40,000. Ms. Green, did you extend that invitation to Mr. Clemens?
So actually, no, um, the Conservation Agent has been out ill for a little over a week and a half.
Okay.
Um, so I have not been able to extend the invitation for the Chair to come.
Could we potentially get them to the meeting next week?
Next week, yes.
Okay. Um, so we'll wait on the, um, on the recommendation, we've already voted to place. Um, Article 28, um, to see if the town will vote, we already did that, that's good, we're good on that. Article 29, uh, 30,000 for environmental hazardous, um, materials and land surveying at, um, at the existing highway department. And it was proposed by the Planning Board, and what is the funding source for this?
Free cash.
Don't we have to say that in the, in the, am I missing?
Yes, we, we will add that in.
Okay.
There, I mean, there was, uh, there, there was some conversations about using ARPA money for this because, um, when I did speak with Tom O'Brien down in Plymouth County, um, he said that, you know, feasibility studies like this, uh, for future constructions are considered, um, eligible projects for ARPA money. So, um, there's, there is a possibility of using ARPA for that. And if the board, um, considers that, what we could do is we could take this and play, and put it with, um, well, I, I would, I would make another chart to show that this was gonna be ARPA money out of the, on the annual. Yes.
Uh, okay, so.
Out of the Plymouth County?
Out of Plymouth County.
Out of, this would come out of the Plymouth County.
Okay, I, I, I like that idea. That's thirty thousand dollars less of our free cash that we're using. What do other people think?
Do we think that's gonna happen? Like, do we think that's gonna be accepted?
Yeah, will they accept it, Lisa?
And again, it's reimbursable, though.
This is a, yes, yes.
So, how do we have to structure?
We have to spend it and then we get it back.
We spend it and then we put the application into, to get it back, yes.
All right, so we'll have to restructure that article if that's the, you know, that's the direction we go in. I like that idea, um, since we have got to tap into that Plymouth County money. What do other people think?
Uh, that, that sounds like a plan.
Okay.
As, as long as it gets written in that if it gets turned down like other applications have, then it doesn't stall anything.
No, so I, I think, um, we've, we've had other articles where we structured it, um, such that, um, you know, it, um, town meeting is paying for the, you know, out of free cash, um, but will seek reimbursement from Plymouth County. But to the extent that we are not reimbursed, we'll still be paying for it out of free cash. Um, is, is, okay, so I will entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? All right, so with that modification, I will entertain a motion to recommend Article twenty-nine.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we already did Article thirty and, uh, where are we at with Article thirty-one, Ms. Green? Has, uh, Ms. Fetteroff, I had an opportunity to review the.
Let me, um, I, I tried to get to her all day to ask her if she was able to, um, review that.
I, I would really like to remove this, um, and the, my reasoning is that it's saying that it's effective July first, twenty twenty-four, so that's like a year. Um, and so clearly, we could put this on the October town meeting. I don't wanna rush it. We've already been down this road with the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement where we got, you know, something that we did not pay attention to and there were unintended consequences. So, I don't want that same thing to happen here. So, what do other people think? Just remove this?
I think so.
It can go on October?
Yeah.
It'd be okay to go on October? I'd prefer it to be on October.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to remove this.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And certainly, reach out to, um, to Superintendent, um, Tom Hickey and just verify that, you know, there aren't any, um, you know, that we're not unwittingly like, you know, blowing everything up because we just removed it. Um, Article thirty-two, um, Hanson Planning Board, description of each bylaw. So, again, I think we were waiting for the planning board, um, to tell us whether they were recommending this or not. So, um, if you could include this in the ones that you're reaching out to, Mr. DePray's vote, um, Ms. Green?
Yes, Tony, um, did say that he sent a letter regarding these, but I cannot find it in my email. Do you recall it? All right, I will double check it on this morning. He did say that he sent a letter regarding these, but I will double check on it because I cannot locate it in my email. So, I will follow up on that.
Okay. Um, and.
The wording is weird on this, too. It might just be me, but.
What's, what's your?
The Hanson Planning Board voted on February twenty-seventh to propose the following zoning bylaw amendments to the select board for their consideration.
He's back in February.
It doesn't make, it doesn't read like all the articles.
Who's recommending, it doesn't even say who's proposing this.
Yeah. It just, it seems like this is.
Is that, am I missing that?
Yeah, it says that they voted to propose.
No, but you know how it usually says article proposed by?
Yeah.
We don't have a, a proposed by.
Well, okay, so you, you, you know why, um, I can answer that question. On the initial, um, I believe on the initial, um, warrant that we looked at, um, he had nine article, there were nine chain, nine amendments to the bylaws that were all kind of clumped together.
I'll print it.
Oh, great, okay. Oh, back and forth. Um, and he actually had requested that all of the articles be, be, um, placed separately. So, just in case if one did not pass, it would not subsequently fa- um, negate all the rest of them.
Yeah, like thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four.
That's totally fine, but it needs to follow the same language that the rest of them do, which is the article, proposed by, and then, uh, you know, explanation.
Yeah, shouldn't it say something like to see if the town will approve the amendments to the zoning bylaws? Shouldn't it say something like that? Cause it's just reading, it's reading like an email sent to us to consider on an agenda.
Yeah, it's not right.
It's just really, it's just confusing, that's all.
This needs work, okay. Article thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, uh, yeah, it's really funky.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven. This is all the stuff that, um, Tony was talking about last time, I remember.
All right, so those are, we need feedback, we need it to be reworded, we need it to be formatted such that it's consistent with the rest of the warrant, and we also need confirmation about whether the planning board, um, voted to, um, to, uh, recommend those. And then that brings us to Article thirty-eight, which is the stringer, um.
Citizens petition.
Yeah, and so on that, um, I believe you all got the email from, um, or I forwarded the email from Kate Fetteroff on the estimated, um, charges, uh, for the legal work that the town would have to pay for to be done for this, um, citizens warrant, uh, citizens article. Um, and we're looking at about seventy to seventy-five thousand dollars. I do not know where that money's going to come from. We're talking about not being able to pay twenty-five thousand dollars for a wheel up at Thomas Mill.
Right.
Can it be ARPA?
Pardon?
Can it be ARPA funds?
Not use ARPA for this. It's not general government services.
This is not general town. Plus, I would not want to use ARPA funds to make a, a private way, a public way, that how is that, yeah, so.
We, we need to add that in here, replace it.
I, I think, um, Ms. Green.
It's a citizens petition, so it has to.
No, that's, that's fine, but, uh, my, my point is, I think that people need to be armed with the facts that this is going to cost the town conservatively sixty-five thousand dollars in legal fees for deeds, titles, research, all of that. Um, and I, how do we do that?
I mean, I think we need to add even like, like from, something from the highway department saying this may cost X amount of money per year to.
Oh, yeah.
To the town also.
And we do, we do have a letter from Jameson, so what we do is, on this is we, in the informational warrant, we can put that information in there regarding the estimate for legal fees, um, an estimate for highway, um, and then we can include that information that came through for that study that Environmental Partners did a few years back.
That shows what needed to be worked on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we could put, we could put that information in the informational warrant.
I think we need to do that. And then, then would we put a little something here that says please see informational warrant?
Um, it would be, and, yes, we could, on the bottom, we could put something, um.
I just think it's important because people aren't gonna think to look at the informational warrant for this particular article.
Right.
People are gonna see and say, why not? Okay, yeah.
Right, they're not, I mean, it sounds on its face, it's like, okay, these, these guys, you know, they, there was some technical thing, they didn't, they didn't get made a public way. If I were the average Joe, I'd say, you know, what, what do I care? I don't think anybody would think about all of the legal work that needs to be done.
Right, exactly.
Um, so, the, I think some kind of a description, uh, like, yes, the legal cost, but why, I think is important because I don't think people are gonna think about, you know, the deed restrictions, the title search, the, you know, all of that, the re- re- reregistering and, and, um, so there's gotta be, you know, and, and if Kate wants to clean up, you know, how she came up with that estimate, just so that it's a little more like, you know, um, user-friendly, um, I, I think that probably would do it, but I, I think that's important.
Yes, we can have all of that right in the informational warrant and, um, you know, basically, we'd have it, so ba- so basically, we would have the informational warrant with the articles in it. So, Article thirty-eight will introduce this and then have the information regarding the approximate cost for the legal fees, approximate cost for, um, highway department taking on those roads, and then approximate cost for, um, the, um, repairs to the catch basins and whatever by, Environmental Partners, when they did their study a few years back, we could put those estimated costs in there.
Okay, I think that would be great. Did anybody have any other thoughts on that?
I just have, just one more that I think is really, really important, is that all of that stuff is a hundred percent true, yes, but even more importantly, none of this is budgeted and none of this will be considered in the budget, period, because we can't budget an extra seventy-five thousand. So, um, the budget that we have, if this goes through, something else will have to be cut in real time on the, on the floor, so.
I, I think what you're saying is, I think it needs to be drilled down just a bit more. Um, and I, I dig where you're coming, uh, from on that. Um, I, again, I think the average person sitting there is gonna say, of course, I wanna help these people out, I'll, I'll vote. But I don't think that they're thinking that that means we can't get Jameson a plow truck or we can't, whatever, fill in the, whatever it is that we can't do because we have to allocate money for this. And there is a time constraint, isn't there here, Lisa? Um, and, and again, I think this needs to be explained to people. We can't, this isn't like, oh, whenever you guys get around to it, you can make these, this a public way. There's certain timing that.
A hundred and twenty days.
Yeah.
We have to start that process and, and really move forward with it quickly.
Okay.
And I would love to be able to help. These folks have been fighting for as long as I can remember.
Yep.
Uh, that's why I wanna come back to the budget as, as a reason. We, we, we have a budget, we, we are still putting the budget together. Literally every single dollar counts and this is something that goes beyond, we have to place it, but I think it's really important that they know that this goes beyond anything that we can foresee in budget in the next fiscal year.
Is there something that they, we can do to vote on it as a town to say, we wanna do this, but it might not be today?
No, because this is a citizens petition, so it has to be voted on. The only way that that could happen, Ed, would be if the petitioners, if the original petitioner, which would be in this case Sandra Crawford, because it's the first person on the petition, if the original petitioner on the floor gives a written amendment to Beth as the town clerk saying, we would, you know, we, we, we are okay with this happening next year. And even then, I don't know if it's legal because there's timing requirements around, around it. So, um, we'll have to have Kate ready to answer questions about this.
It will be discussion about this.
And make a sta- I think we need to proactively get up. I don't wanna wait until, you know, people start asking questions on the floor. I think we really need to have Kate get up and explain what the process is, um, for the taking, uh, what the timeline is for the taking, um, and so that people are really clear. If I'm making a decision now and it's gotta be done in a hundred and twenty days, that means it impacts this budget right now, right here. Um, so, okay, we'd beat that dead horse. Um, unless anybody else had anything, so they wanted to say, okay. And then Article thirty-nine, um, was not included in the last, um, warrant, but was, uh, according to Ms. Green, turned in in time.
Yes.
Um, so, um, again, it's a citizens petition. We're not required to vote on recommending it, um, or placing it because it's placed. Um, and it is, um, to basically compel the state to remove the Native American from the flag and sail. Um, and it gives a whole, a host of reasons why, um, and it was signed by a group of citizens. So, um, I, I, I hope the proponent will be at town meeting to, you know, to speak to, um, to that resolution. And again, it's non-binding, it's a resolution sort of saying to the state, hey, we're another town that really doesn't like having that Native American on the, if that's the way it gets voted, um, doesn't, doesn't like having that Native American on our, on the state flag. Um, we can't compel the state to do anything. And my understanding is there's like two hundred other towns who have adopted that. This is pro forma language that, um, is out on some website and I, I think, uh, was just adopted by these folks. Um, any questions on that? All right.
We don't have to vote on that at all.
No, we don't need to vote. Um, so at this point, I'm wondering, do we, um, should we leave the warrant open until next week since we've got some open questions? And I don't wanna keep opening, closing, opening, closing. Um, okay, so can you recap? Can you just recap for me the things that you've got us to do? So, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same sheet of music here.
But we're not gonna add anything.
We're not gonna add anything.
You're not gonna add anything.
No, 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 no. I mean, that's, do we have to reopen it to recommend articles?
Uh, well, you actually didn't, I feel like we really closed it last week.
I feel like we closed it and then recommended on like town meeting floor before without reopening. I don't remember reopening it. Uh, but just out of an abundance of caution procedurally, I'm not sure, so if you could look into that. Um, and then, um, okay, so give me what you've got for the to-dos on this, because I just wanna make sure we can be once and done next week.
All right, so Article fifteen regarding the wheel, we're going to add, um, defer to town meeting rather than recommend. Um, and then we have Article twenty-nine, which is the thirty thousand for the seven-nine-seven highway survey and hazardous, um, study. Um, we're going to, um, update the language on that to, uh, reflect, we're going to use ARPA to the extent that if it's not reimbursed, it would be used to free cash, we're gonna update that, that language. Um, Article thirty-one, which is the regional agreement for the South Shore Vocational High School, I'm gonna reach out to Superintendent Hickey on that just to make sure, uh, they're aware that we're going to place it on the October special town meeting and if there is some dire need that they needed on this one, um, I will report that back. Um, Article thirty-two, we're gonna just follow up with our town planner on the planning board support and just follow up on some language on that. Um, that's Article thirty-two and forward. Um, we're gonna read this reword. Article thirty-nine, we're gonna put that information on the informational warrant with the, uh, costs, with the estimated costs.
Article thirty-eight.
Uh, Article thirty-eight, yes. Um, let's see, let's see.
Article twenty-seven, we need some more specific information from the Chair or from our conservation agent as to how those.
Yeah, we're gonna invite them to the April eleventh, sorry.
Yep.
We're gonna invite the Chair to the April eleventh meeting, uh, to talk about Article twenty-seven and, let's see.
Didn't we strike one?
What'd you say, Ed?